Yes is a yes, no means no. There are people that love you and believe you, and the world is changing. Have hope. We have a slut walk. We have people organizing. We have people protesting. Things are changing for you. And vote! That will get people out of office who believe in silencing us. Vote!
Activist and feminist Amber Rose started the annual walk, which is now in its fourth year. Over at La Plaza, Angelinos came together for another common cause: celebrating and mourning loved ones who are no longer with us. El Velorio at La Plaza de la Raza was all about community and giving back.
Ouch! That foot in the fire has got to hurt. Oh, wait. These people are all supposed to be dead. Or at least, dressed up like it anyway. So maybe it doesn't hurt. As the Day of the Dead holiday descends on Angelinos, this El Velorio event helps honor those who have passed on.
In English, it's "the wake." So it's a part of the whole death process. And that's one of the reasons why it's decided to call it El Velorio.
The Day of the Dead is about a month-long celebration of life and death, and family, and friends. And, you know, I'm a person that respects both life and death. I actually have it tattooed on my chest.
The Mexican-American celebration honors all dead loved ones. But at least on this night, it focuses on artists and musicians, like dead mariachis.
And this is a representation of some of the musicians that have passed, and also some of the battles that we fought to get where we're at.
I personally had a daughter and a son that passed away, so kind of just in memory of them.
I always celebrate their lives. Always, every day.
The dead here apparently come in all shapes, sizes, and forms of expression, from scary and tense to the downright nice, sweet, and friendly. Or we leave this one for you to decide.
Katrina is a woman from the Day of the Dead. And most commonly, they're all dolled up. They are in gorgeous gowns, gorgeous makeup. And usually, as we see them, they're skeletons.
My makeup represents, you know, more of a living culture that is still going on here in Los Angeles. A culture so beautiful that needs to become bigger and that not many are really knowing of it.
Kind of like Halloween, but not really.
We bring photos of our deceased, and it's a day to honor them. It's very different for Halloween. Halloween is just, in my opinion, is just a costume party.
Costume party or not, it's a chance to celebrate life, and death, and art, whether you're ghoulish, happy, beautiful, or sad. And you have 30 days to do it.
El Velorio helped raise funds for La Plaza de la Raza Cultural Center. Turning now to another cultural event, crowds came to Pershing Square to celebrate Oktoberfest. Here in L.A., we, of course, change it up a bit by mixing some local brews with traditional German ones.
I have been to Munich, Germany, to Oktoberfest three times, and I always wondered why L.A. didn't have one. An outdoor, really, really outdoor Oktoberfest. And so, three years ago, I embarked on putting it together. This is our third year, and it's been successful. People have responded well to it. I think it's a cultural event more than anything, because besides beer, you get to enjoy food from Germany, clothing from Germany, music from Germany. That's pretty fantastic.
The first Oktoberfest in downtown L.A. took place in 2016. Well, it's become a beloved annual tradition of music, art, and community. Rasha Guel takes us down by the L.A. River to the Frog Town Art Walk.
Art, food, entertainment, and much more along the L.A. River in Elysian Valley. It's the 11th Annual Frog Town Art Walk, a community festival that brings artists, businesses, and residents together. Frog Town Art Walk is held every other year. Residents say they enjoy being able to come out and celebrate the creativity in the neighborhood.
I'm very happy, because it's gonna make, get people out and be more cultural, and we meet the neighbors and see people.
Residents get to connect with nature and art while artists are excited to share their work.
Frog Town's going through a lot of changes, and interesting ones. I think we're in a very interesting point in time, where many communities are sort of merging here.
The name Frog Town comes from the frogs that used to emerge from the grassy banks. And it was later adopted by local gangs to keep most locals and artists away. But things have changed over the past few years, where now, a thriving creative community has blossomed.
I would've never thought it would've been like this. Never would've thought. Twenty, thirty years ago, growing up, this was all commercial business, and we never thought it would come down to gentrification. It's a lot different than it was.
Night installations also illuminated the streets. Frog Town has become a place for many artists, where they are able to fuel their creative process.
As you just saw, free pedicabs were offered along the L.A. River path during the event. A new care center for people experiencing homelessness. The LADWP gets the valley ready for an earthquake, and a grant helps improve access to the L.A. River from Studio City. All these stories in City V. Mayor Eric Garcetti joined Councilmember Gil Sadio and other state and local officials for the grand opening of the Pico Union Recuperative Care Center, where homeless Angelinos can heal after being discharged from the hospital and be connected to housing resources and social services. Amenities include semi-private rooms, an informal clothing closet, where residents can access donated clothing and accessories, regular visiting hours, and a community garden for neighbor and client use.
Thank you all so much for making this day possible. We will end homelessness in L.A.
City leaders visited the construction site of the longest earthquake-resistant pipeline project in the nation. The project, located in the San Fernando Valley, is adding four miles of LADWP pipe that transports water over the San Fernando Fault in Silmar to residents in the sunland Tuhanga area of the valley. The project is part of LADWP's commitment to meet the mayor's goal to install a total of 14 miles of earthquake-resistant iron pipeline by 2020. City and state officials also celebrated $150,000 in new funding to revitalize the Studio City Greenway along the L.A. River. The grant from the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and awarded to the city of Los Angeles will go toward improving bike and pedestrian access points, restoring the landscaping, and enhancing public health and safety along the Greenway from Witset Avenue to Laurel Canyon Boulevard. It's made up of a unique list of ingredients like chocolate, cinnamon, chilies, and more, creating a rich, intense flavor. It's mole, a Mexican sauce that simmers in tradition.
Here we are at the Feria de los Moles in Grand Park in downtown Los Angeles. This is the 11th annual feria that we have.
The mole came about back in the Oaxaca when we wanted to combine, make a dish that combined our ingredients. And during the colonization period, as we, you know, started doing trade and everything, we gained more products.
It goes very well with just about anything. I've had it for many years, and I enjoy it to this day. You know, 11 years ago, these small group of people came to my office from Puebla. They said they wanted to start a Feria de los Moles, so that people in Los Angeles could taste the great mole that was founded or first created in the city of Puebla, Mexico. And here we are, 11 years later. It's become one of the largest outdoor food festivals in the United States. But I think what's made it so popular is that not only is mole delicious, it's a sauce that's created with different ingredients, like chocolate and cinnamon and all kinds of great stuff. But also, it's so popular, because people want to come together and simply celebrate culture. And this is a great example of what happens when people in Los Angeles are working with the Mexican government to continue to make this a great event. And each year, it gets bigger and bigger. More music, more food, more fun, and it's just a great thing to see.
Celebrate Dia de los Muertos in Pacoima, fall into fun at the Griffith Park Harvest Festival, and see a downtown L.A. landmark light up with music. All this and this week's Things to Do. Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez invites you for Dia de los Muertos Music and Arts Festival in Pacoima. The two-day street festival along Van Nuys Boulevard will feature Latino artists and entertainers, tasty food, contests, and community vendors. You don't want to miss out on this fun and free event for all ages in L.A. The festival takes place November 3rd and 4th at 12:00 p.m. at the Pacoima City Hall, located at 13520 Van Nuys Boulevard. Fall into fun at the Griffith Park Harvest Festival. Celebrate the changing seasons with the Second Annual Harvest Festival in Griffith Park. Join in for live music, food, local craft, beer, games, climbing wall, and other fun autumn activities. Co-hosted by the Los Angeles Parks Foundation and the City of Los Angeles Department of Recreation and Parks. The festival takes place Sunday, November 4th, from 12 to 4 p.m. at 4730 Crystal Springs Drive. The Triforium in downtown L.A. lives again. Its original light and sound programs, rescued from dusty 8-bit paper tapes and transcoded into modern software, will return, reacting in real time to live musical performances. For the first time in decades, Angelinos will have an opportunity to experience the Triforium as it was meant to be experienced. See it in action on Friday, November 2nd, in downtown L.A. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana K. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityv.org, and check out our newest social media videos, L.A. This Minute. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Good morning. Colleagues, President Martinez, I want to officially welcome everyone in this chamber to the 2018 American Indian Heritage Month Celebration in the city of Los Angeles. Welcome, everyone, and let's have a big round of applause. Let me start by acknowledging Chief Anthony Morales and his son Andy, and Kevin Nunez, who came in with the ceremonial staff, and his son Nathan and his mother Charlotte, for leading this morning's procession into council chambers. We began our inaugural Indigenous Peoples' Day with these two leaders, along with my chief Billy Friend of the Wyandotte Nation, just one month ago, on the second Monday of October, October 8th, for our first-ever inaugural Indigenous Peoples' Day in Los Angeles. How appropriate and fitting for them to join us this morning. I'm also joined by our commission members from the Los Angeles City-County Native American Indian Commission, and they toil behind the scenes year-round on issues that are important to Native Americans in the Los Angeles region, and I would like them to have a very big round of applause as well. Our commission, thank you. I am especially honored to be able to shine the council spotlight on the cultures and traditions of the Native American community in Los Angeles, home to the largest Native American population anywhere else in the United States. We're going to start honors today with some very, very special individuals. We're going to start by honoring Glenda Ahahati of Cherokee Nation. Ms. Glenda Ahahati is a member of the Cherokee Nation of Oklahoma and is originally from Copan, Oklahoma. She's lived in the Southern California area since 1954 and has worked in many capacities, including Executive Director of the Los Angeles City-County American Indian Commission, of DMH Volunteer Services, Coordinator for DMH Hearing Impaired Clients Interpreter Service, and Acting Director of the American Indian Counseling Center. She served more than 10 years as an appointee of the Secretary of Commerce as a member of the Census Advisory Committee on the American Indian Population. As the Executive Assistant for the Los Angeles City-County Native American Indian Commission, she secured the Community Services American Indian Block Grant funding for Los Angeles County. Also, she is the leader at a national level. So what I'd like to do is, is Glenda here today? She's not able to be here, so I'm going to ask Pat Lopez of the commission to say a few words about Glenda Ahahati. Ms. Lopez.
Thank you all for being here and for recognizing Native American Heritage Month. Glenda Ahahati served in many capacities, did many roles in the Native American community in the political arena, in the social arena, and the cultural arena. Her sons follow presently in her footsteps. And as Executive Director of the Native American Indian Commission, she presented many times at Children's Court in behalf of Indian Child Welfare Act, EQUA, and she was a mainstay in our community and a woman that we all respected. And she presently is very ill, so we thought it was the time now, while she's still with us, to give her her due respect. And I thank you for being here.
All right. Our next honoree is Harold Freeland. Harold Freeland is of the Folded Arms People, born to the Two Who Came to Water Clan Navajo. Harold arrived in Los Angeles in January of 1972 under the Bureau of Indian Affairs Relocation Program. Harold majored in Commercial Art at Los Angeles Trade Tech College, and after completing his training in 1974, he immediately gained employment in the United American Indian Involvement Silk Screen business and designed their first logo on, in the business card. After gaining experience, he was hired as an editorial graphic designer in the former Los Angeles Herald Examiner from 1977 to its closing in 1988, 98 rather. During his time there, he was only one of a few Native Americans working in a major metropolitan newspaper. Harold went into freelancing and doing art exhibitions. Harold's currently employed at the UAII as a graphics support staff, and his art is amazing. In his spare time, he travels throughout California, Arizona, New Mexico, and Colorado doing art exhibits and gallery shows. Mr. Freeland has been instrumental to the American Indian community living in Los Angeles. Harold Freeland.
I just want to say thank you for having me here for this honoring, and it's been a long time since I've been here, and I wish my family was here, but right now, the community here is my family, and I'd like to appreciate this, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, so since we're on the topic of the great Navajo Nation, Henry Hale and Lucy Hale were from the Navajo Nation as well. Henry was of the Saltwater Clan, born for the towering House People Clan. Lucy was of the Red House Clan, born for the Big Water Clan. Mr. Hale was originally from the Navajo community of Oak Springs, Arizona, and Mrs. Hale was originally from the Navajo community of Wide Ruins, Arizona. As part of the US government's Indian Relocation Act during the 1940s and 50s, Henry and Lucy at a young age were sent to Sherman Indian Institute in Riverside, California. While at Sherman, Henry met his wife Lucy and developed his hoop dance and old-style fancy dance skill, skills. Henry and Lucy raised their four sons Benjamin, Bruce, Kevin, and Philip, and three daughters, Kathy, Sandra, and Melinda, in the Los Angeles area. Community members remember them fondly for being welcoming, friendly, and carrying themselves with grace. They had a genuine love for their Los Angeles American Indian community, and I would like Phil Hale, the son, to come and say a few words about his parents.
Thank you very much for bestowing this honor upon my parents and also my family. I would like to thank the LA City American Indian, Native American Indian City and County Commission for thinking of my parents in this way, my family, of course, Councilman Mitchell Farrell, and all of you here that are here today, all of you LA City Council. This is a great honor for not only my parents and my family, but those that came through the relocation era, that came here to urban areas such as Los Angeles to live their lives, to take advantage of those educational employment opportunities that were provided for them in these urban areas. And it's been, myself, I could say it's been a pleasure to be a lifelong community member here in the LA American Indian community, and also to the other families, this plaque that my parents are about to receive, we want to more or less represent that for all the other families who were in the same situation, who went through the same, who endured the same relocation process and that are still here today, the third and fourth generations of those people that came here 50 years and beyond that want to accept this plaque on their behalf, and they're also on their behalf. So it's, I love this community, the American Indian community, I would do anything for it, and it's been a pleasure to work within this community to benefit our community, especially our elders and our youth. So thank you so much for, again, for this honor and in our language, I can't thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil. Next, we move over to the Cheyenne Nation, Toni Hawk. Toni Hawk was born and raised in Thomas, Oklahoma, in the traditional Cheyenne ways. Both her grandfather Jacob Allrunner and her brother were tribal chiefs. Her family moved to El Monte, California, in the 1950s, under a common theme here we have going, the Bureau of Indian Affairs Relocation Program. After graduating from Haskell Indian Nations University with a degree in vocational training, Toni joined her family in California and quickly became involved with the Native American community in Los Angeles County. She married John Henry Hank Hawk and had four children, three boys and a girl. She was devoted to raising her children and grandchildren with traditional Cheyenne ways and ensuring the survival of the people's culture and ways. A few years prior to her passing, she was honored in Oklahoma by the Southern Cheyenne at her tribe's annual powwow for her commitment to her culture and the preservation of traditional ways. Toni made countless contributions to the LA County American Indian and Alaska Native Community as a cultural, community, and political activist. I am so glad that Toni Hawk's daughter, Antoinette Hawk, is here to say a few words about her mother.
Hello. Want to say thank you for honoring my mom. I wish she was here. She is so humble, she wouldn't believe it, and she'd probably say, no, not me. But I could tell you a whole lot about my mother, but my cousin here, he has that speech kind of attitude, so he can tell you a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our family's very honored to be here today. Just wanted to...
Mr. Hale was originally from the Navajo community of Oak Springs, Arizona, and Mrs. Hale was originally from the Navajo community of Wide Ruins, Arizona. As part of the US Government's Indian Relocation Act during the 1940s and 50s, Henry and Lucy at a young age were sent to Sherman Indian Institute in Riverside, California. While at Sherman, Henry met his wife Lucy and developed his hoop dance and old-style fancy dance skill, skills. Henry and Lucy raised their four sons Benjamin, Bruce, Kevin, and Philip, and three daughters, Kathy, Sandra, and Melinda in the Los Angeles area. Community members remember them fondly for being welcoming, friendly, and carrying themselves with grace. They had a genuine love for their Los Angeles American Indian community, and I would like Phil Hale, the son, to come and say a few words about his parents.
Thank you very much for bestowing this honor upon my parents and also my family. I would like to thank the LA City American Indian, Native American Indian City and County Commission for thinking of my parents in this way, my family, of course Councilman Mitchell Farrell, and all of you here that are here today, all of you LA City Council. This is a great honor for not only my parents and my family, but those that came through the relocation era, that came here to urban areas such as Los Angeles to live their lives, to take advantage of those educational employment opportunities that were provided for them in these urban areas. And it's been, myself, I could say it's been a pleasure to be a lifelong community member here in the LA American Indian community, and also to the other families, this plaque that my parents are about to receive, we want to more or less represent that for all the other families who were in the same situation, who went through the same, who endured the same relocation process and that are still here today, the third and fourth generations of those people that came here 50 years and beyond that want to accept this plaque on their behalf, they're also on their behalf. So it's, I love this community, the American Indian community, I would do anything for it, and it's been a pleasure to work within this community, to benefit our community, especially our elders and our youth. So thank you so much for, again, for this honor and in our language, I can't thank you very much.
Next, we move over to the Cheyenne Nation, Toni Hawk. Toni Hawk was born and raised in Thomas, Oklahoma, in the traditional Cheyenne ways. Both her grandfather Jacob Allrunner and her brother were tribal chiefs. Her family moved to El Monte, California in nineteen, the 1950s, under a common theme here we have going, the Bureau of Indian Affairs Relocation Program. After graduating from Haskell Indian Nations University with a degree in vocational training, Toni joined her family in California and quickly became involved with the Native American community in Los Angeles County. She married John Henry Hank Hawk and had four children, three boys and a girl. She was devoted to raising her children and grandchildren with traditional Cheyenne ways and ensuring the survival of the people's culture and ways. A few years prior to her passing, she was honored in Oklahoma by the Southern Cheyenne at her tribe's annual powwow for her commitment to her culture and the preservation of traditional ways. Toni made countless contributions to the LA County American Indian and Alaska Native Community as a cultural, community, and political activist. I am so glad that Toni Hawk's daughter, Antoinette Hawk, is here to say a few words about her mother.
Want to say thank you for honoring my mom. I wish she was here. She is so humble, she wouldn't believe it, and she'd probably say, no, not me. But I could tell you a whole lot about my mother, but my cousin here, he has that speech kind of attitude, so he can tell you a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our family's very honored to be here today. Just wanted to thank the council members, thank the committee for asking us to be here and represent my Aunt Toni Hawk. She came here in the 50s in the Relocation Act also. At the time they came, there were very, almost no Native American events, powwows, or any kind of cultural doings that they had at that time. My grandfather, Jack Allrunner, and his wife Emily Allrunner came here in that Relocation Act, and it brought the whole family. And in a way, that was good because it kept the family together, but it also, when they relocated, they were able to network with all these other Native Americans who came here at the same time. And by doing so, they actually made our culture stronger by networking, by starting the powwow, starting the Gore Dance Society, starting all of these things that are very alive today that have been going on for hundreds of years in the Native American community. So we want to thank everybody for being here, and once again, oh ho.
And also, this is Mary Allrunner, Toni Hawk's sister.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk about my sister. Excuse me, I have a cold, so. But I'm very honored for her to be here today, I mean, to be here to talk with my sister. She did a lot of things for our tribe and all the community in LA, and she was very giving of whatever she could do for people. And she helped a lot of people that just came out here, that maybe needed help, maybe needed groceries, maybe needed a place to live. She was always willing to help them, and nothing was, nothing was too big for her to do. She had these, she had the Christmas party for the Native American kids. She was worrying because she says, if I don't put it on, the Native American kids will not have a Christmas. So she would use her, she was on social security, and she would use all her money just to buy the stuff for the kids and just give what she had. She didn't care if she spent all her money, but that's the kind of person she was. And I'm really proud and honored that she has got this honor today. And I thank everybody for acknowledging her, and thank my family for being here for today, my niece, my son, my granddaughter. And we have a big family, and we are very, we come from a very traditional tribe in Oklahoma, from the Cheyenne Nation. And my grandfather was a chief, my brother was a chief, and we just, we try and follow all the traditional ways, we were brought up like that, and we still do, no matter that we live in a city, we are still Native Americans, and we are still very traditional and proud of it. So thank you. Another thing, the power that my sister started, like 38 years ago, is still going on. And now that my niece has taken over, take, from my sister's place to have the powwow and the Christmas party, and it's held in Anaheim. And every Christmas, though, there's, you know, it's, all the Indian kids can have a Christmas, and we have an Indian Santa Claus that comes too, so. You know, this is ongoing, so thank you.
Thanks again, committee, and also I'd like to thank John Dawson, my Uncle John Dawson. He's with us as well.
One more thing, one more thing I'd like to say is that, okay, one more thing I'd like to say is that I was here before with when Mayor Yorit was the mayor, this is ages ago, and I took a picture with him, and we were, we were there representing the Indian Days and the coin, Native American Indian coin. So it's really nice, thank you.
A long history, a long history with the city. Let's take a picture. Yes. All right. Thank you so much. Now, as I mentioned when I started this celebration here, this presentation, on October 8th, I was joined by the Los Angeles City-County Native American Indian Commission, and we co-collaborated on this year's inaugural Indigenous Peoples' Day, held right here on Ancestral Tonga Land where City Hall itself is built. And colleagues, we made history on August 30th of 2017 when we replaced Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Los Angeles. Both Grand Park and City Hall, public spaces, were utilized for activities planned throughout the day. They included a sunrise ceremony, a 5K run, Parade of Nations, a powwow, panel discussions on trending topics related to Native Americans in the community, very well attended, a fashion show, and a grand finale concert. I would now like to spotlight very important contributors who made the day an outstanding success. First, I would like to welcome Pat Vegas, co-founder of the Grammy-winning group Redbone. Mr. Vegas, please step forward. All right, so here's what Pat Vegas and Redbone did for us on that day. When I spoke with Pat leading up to this, he just talked about how he wanted to make sure that it was a day of love and celebration, which is only fitting because of their incredible hit Come and Get Your Love, which won Grammys in 1974. Mr. Vegas co-founded the Native American rock band Redbone right here in Los Angeles. He and his brother Lali had been performing previously, but they formed the band in 1969. The band produced several hit songs, including Maggie, The Witch Queen of New Orleans, and of course, Come and Get Your Love, which peaked at number five on the Billboard Hot 100 and was certified gold. Now, it made a comeback in the movie Guardians of the Galaxy in 2014. The song just keeps going. They did a remake of it some years ago, I think it was in the 90s, and that was another hit, and you can hear it in the JCPenney commercial right now. It's just, the song just keeps giving because it's such a beautiful celebratory song that reaches across the entire spectrum of cultures. Pat Vegas was the main composer and singer of the band. He's also an amazing bass player with a very unique rhythmic style with profound energy. Pat is the one who kept the flame alive through the years and is still playing with the band with the, with new musicians, including his son PJ, which I'm going to introduce in a moment. In 2008, Pat and Redbone were honored during the Native American Music Awards. Pat was also inducted into the Hall of Fame with special honors at Seneca, Niagara Casino, Niagara Falls, New York. Ladies and gentlemen, I give you Pat Vegas.
One of the things that I wanted to say is that there's so much youth out there that's doing music, and since we started in the 60s, there's been a real uplift of Native American recording artists and singers, and I'm real proud of that, that I had something to do with it. And I always say, help the young understand the old, one is silver, the other gold. And this, this Native American music is going to rise to the top of the charts, it's going to be the most popular music in the world, and it's coming, folks, I'm letting you know that now. And I'm real proud to be a part of it. And God bless you all, and thank you so much for listening, and buy my records.
I gave you a window into Redbone and its current members. Well, PJ Vegas is Pat's son, and the Vegas family clearly has talent in abundance. Now PJ is an indigenous R&B hip-hop artist, recent recipient of the Best Indie Artist of the Year Award at 2018, Native American Music Awards, yes. PJ also joined Taboo of the Black Eyed Peas in the win of the 2017 MTV Video Music Award for Best Video with a Social Message for the song Stand Up, Standin' Rock, No Dapple, bringing awareness to social issues in Native country, in Indian country. He's been acclaimed from coast to coast for his silky-smooth vocals. How do you like that PJ, silky-smooth vocals? Polished image, polished image, and is considered the voice of a new generation of Native artists. PJ was a fierce advocate for creating the various programming for inaugural, the inaugural Indigenous Peoples' Day, joining the steering committee, collaborating with the commission and my team. PJ was the great connector that helped, helped, I think, secure the identity for that very, very special day, October 8th, because the incredible music and the performances from Indigenous Americans all day long helped really, I think, secure a successful day because Native America is all about art and culture, and PJ brought it. So without further ado, welcome PJ Vegas.
Thank you so much for this honor to be here to represent my family and my people. If you would have told me two years ago that I'd be standing up here alongside Mitchell Farrell accepting an award, I would have told you you were crazy, but I guess that's what happens when you follow your passion and you let it take you to places you've never dreamed of. I want to thank the Los Angeles Native American Indian Commission and County for all the help and support that they gave us during this day, and I want to thank everyone in Los Angeles City Hall for being a part of history, because this is history in the making. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much, PJ. All right, so we had another very special performance to close the day in celebration, and that was none other than the Black Eyed Peas. So Jaime Luis Gomez, better known by his stage name and my friend Taboo, is an American rapper, actor, and singer best known as a member of the hip-hop group The Black Eyed Peas since 1995. Taboo is of Mexican-American and Native American Shoshone and Hopi heritage. He was born in Boyle Heights. Boyle Heights, raisin-rose meat. This year, The Black Eyed Peas produced their seventh studio album, Masters of the Sun, Volume One, a political album loosely inspired by the graphic novel of the same name and the contemporary social climate of the United States. The newest single, Big Love, is a pop rap track penned with a premise of reminding the world the importance of love. The lyrics reference drug addiction and gun safety. Taboo could not be present today, he's touring in Europe due to the Black Eyed Peas Masters of the Sun Tour, but he sent us a special message from Glasgow in the United Kingdom.
It's Taboo, and I want to say thank you for acknowledging American Heritage Month. We had an honor performing at the Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we can't wait to be a part of it next year, just being involved with the folks. Thank you to Black Eyed Peas, my bandmates, for being there with me, and we salute the city of Los Angeles for such a big milestone. Let's love it.
So PJ, would you accept the award for Taboo since he is not able to be here? Thank you. All right, Jacob Pratt. Jacob Pratt is a Dakota, Salto, and registered member of the Kote First Nations in Saskatchewan, Canada. Jacob is currently pursuing a Masters of Science in Social Entrepreneurship at USC and has also developed a career in the entertainment industry as a musician, dancer, and actor. He recently finished filming season two of Wild Archaeology, a docu-series airing on the Aboriginal Peoples Television Network in Canada. He's received many awards, including the 2016 CCAB National Youth Entrepreneur of the Year Award, where we're all very pleased to have him co- emceeing the entire day with Ade Lamar, and we're pleased to present Jacob Pratt with this token of our appreciation for Indigenous Peoples' Day. Jacob.
Thank you very much. It was an honor for me to be a part of the Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration, and I'd like to thank Councilman Mitchell Farrell for spearheading the adoption of Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I want to thank the Los Angeles City Council for being brave enough to make a move towards recognizing Indigenous people on this important day and making an important social change that needs to happen throughout our country. And we are really spearheading the social movement that, that needs to happen of recognizing Indigenous people for, for our place within our country on a national scale. So thank you very much.
And I don't know if Ade Lamar is listening because she is very busy, especially weekday mornings. We wake up in Los Angeles every, every day with Ade Lamar on the Steve Harvey Morning Show on 102.3 KJHL. She's not able to be here, as I said, but including, she's co-hosted for three years Stevie Wonder's Morning Thunder $1,000 Thursday Show, a day of Native American and African American heritage, the first woman to lead a morning show in Los Angeles from '06 to '07, the first African American woman to do so. Ade is also the host of Free Talk on Saturday mornings. The show gives her audience a voice to discuss issues and serves as a platform for businesses, organizations, and people that are dedicated to helping the community. Ade is a Tatum, Texas native with a BA in Broadcast Journalism from the University of Oklahoma, my alma mater as well. She's out of the country today, but we send her warm regards and appreciation for her contribution to Indigenous Peoples' Day. She is fantastic, a wonderful, wonderful lady. All right, that brings us to Levi Ponce. Levi, born in 1987 to a sign maker and seamstress, Levi Ponce has been studying art and form since childhood. He began painting with his father in 1990, which led to a great deal of travel in the city of Los Angeles. In those lengthy paint sessions, he saw art on the walls of Southern California via graffiti, advertisements, and murals. After graduating from California State University, Northridge, in '09, Levi began painting and organizing the creation of murals in Los Angeles. He also applied his degree in animation in a variety of creative fields, including digital composition, for such films as Star Wars and The Force Awakens in 2017 and Interstellar in 2014. Levi is no stranger to this council, we all love his art and his murals. He's also been featured in museums and TV broadcasts literally too numerous to mention here. So I would like to honor Levi Ponce for playing such a huge role in bringing his art and his talent to Indigenous Peoples' Day.
My name is Levi. Thank you so much for the opportunity to participate on this wonderful, wonderful event. It's the beginning of shifting tides and the pendulum swinging back, and it's an immense, it's a tremendous honor to be able to participate at this event, and I want to say that I've never seen the arts on such full display, from all the families to all the tribes, from music to the visual arts, to our dances, performances, and downright to the arts of planning and organizing. Mitchell Farrell, thank you so much for the opportunity. Beautiful day.
Thank you. And our other artist for the day was Votan. Votan is not able to be here, I'll just say a few quick words about Votan. Street artist, Venice native, who has Mayan and Nahua roots, and he's Street artist, Venice native who has Mayan and Nahua roots, and he started by doing graffiti, tagging, but he became this great artist. So anyone who's listening and you feel like tagging a wall, get yourself to an art class instead because you could become a Levi Ponce or a Votan, right? He's incredible. So we want to congratulate Votan and Levi and all of the wonderful artists who participated. Colleagues, lastly, we all are on this individual journey in this role that we have, myself included, and one of the roles that I never even anticipated for a single minute was that I would play a role in the creation of Indigenous Peoples' Day, not just in Los Angeles, but perhaps other places. But one thing I knew coming into this office is that I was very proud of my Wyandotte heritage from Oklahoma. My grandfather had been chief. I have two great-grandfathers who are also chiefs of the tribe. When I was sworn in to the office in 2013, chief friend came to the Los Angeles River. That was important to me, to be sworn in at a traditional Tongva location next to the Los Angeles River in my district. Throughout this journey and throughout this process of getting to know my Native American brothers and sisters surrounding us today, some of the tribal elders, some of the chairman and chairwomen, and friends from across Indigenous Southern California, I have really found my identity at a deeper level, and I just appreciate so much the warmth and support and the collaboration and friendship of Indigenous California, and I just wanted to say that. And it culminated, I think, in Indigenous Peoples' Day on October 8th, and we have a little video that I haven't seen yet, but I hear that it captures the spirit of that day. So at this time, we can roll the video for Indigenous Peoples' Day from last month. Welcome to the inaugural Indigenous Peoples' Day in Los Angeles. You are part of history. I knew that the theme had to be one of celebration, one of unity. We wanted to make sure that everyone understood this was a celebration for everyone. So we quickly settled on the themes that would be meaningful but also celebratory. So we opened with the blessing from the Tongva, and from the blessing at the sunrise, the day was set in motion.
Honor your women, for without your women, there would be no nations. We're not here to cry, we're here to celebrate, to yell, and say our war cry. Let's hear a war cry! That's it, we're Indigenous people, we're powerful, on our feet are the bones of our ancestors.
We have a responsibility to the spirits, to our ancestors, to change things. The Pride of Nations element of Indigenous Peoples' Day was one of my favorite moments ever since being an elected official in Los Angeles, to see the dozens and dozens of tribes from across the Americas that participated be introduced and present themselves. We were so thrilled to have Adele Lamar and Jacob Pratt as our emcees for the entire day. I was delighted to have them aboard for this historic occasion.
Women in leadership in eastern Oklahoma are a rare commodity.
Sexism is like racism, it's very dehumanizing.
This is my name. I'm the artistic director of Native Voices at the Autry. We develop and produce new work by Native Americans and champion Native theater artists
One of the groups that was represented was the Two-Spirit Presence, the LGBT community. As a member of the LGBT community myself, and the fact that Two-Spirit Peoples, which is a very significant element of Native American, it was important to have that presence. In Native America, everyone is welcome, everyone is part of the tribe, and no one is discriminated against.
We know where we're at, this is Tongva territory.
That is actually a foreign concept before first contact.
Salute.
We can help in the healing process that this community has been waiting for, praying for, and working toward.
Today is a victory not just for Indigenous peoples here in America, but for Indigenous peoples from the north of Canada down to the south of South America.
Los Angeles!
Also, colleagues, thank you.
I said Los Angeles, so you ready?
Thank you for supporting this. This is just an inkling from the video that you've seen of what that day meant to thousands of people who were gathered from across the Americas. We had people from Central America, South America, the East Coast, New York State, Washington State, Oklahoma, who gathered for the largest Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration in the United States, right here at L.A. City Hall and Grand Park. Thank you for that. All right, so wrapping this up, have a few announcements, and then I want to present a certificate to the commission. We have the Los Angeles City-County Native American Indian Commission Powwow. All are welcome. If you haven't been to a Powwow, this is your chance. Please come, Saturday, November 17th, 2018, at 10 o'clock a.m., right here at Grand Park. The 2018 American Indian Heritage Month Gallery, the third-floor bridge, okay, here's a flyer for the Powwow, throughout the month of November. Curator is Don Jackson, commissioner with the commission that I just mentioned. So therefore, colleagues, what I'd like to do is have Chair Rudy Ortega, Joseph Quintana, and the entire commission stand with me, and we're going to present you with a token of my appreciation for this incredible collaboration for the October 8th Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration. Thank you, colleagues.
Mr. O'Farrell, I just want to say, if I can just take one second, just, I just want to thank Mr. O'Farrell for the recognition and the acknowledgement of Indigenous people here in our city. Thank you very much. Just give him a big round of applause for leading the way in doing what's right, and congratulations to all the honorees. Well, great job, my friend. Thank you.
I do have flyers for our Native American Heritage Month celebration.
Thank you, ma'am. If we can just give our sergeants, give them to our sergeants, they will make sure each council office gets one. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, we're going to move on to multiple cards.
Herman, followed by Antonia Ramirez and Mr. Previn. You're speaking on cards numbers 34, 35, 36A, all of 36, and 37A, and your general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mommy. So now that we're asking the city attorney to purchase and sales of agreements based on the items specified in the Indigenous celebration, we're asking for this ordinance to protect the sales of all Indigenous Native Americans for free.
Mr. Herman, I don't know which item you're on. Could you please tell us what on 34 to 37 you're on?
I'm on item 34 and on, jackass. What item are you on?
No, Mr. Herman, stick to the rules. You know what items you're going to speak on. Speak on the items or move on to general public comment.
Thank you, Mommy Chair. Now on item 35, Mr. Keebler. Does it need to execute the following? Am I on topic now, you moron? Absolutely, because I revised a total of $7 million detailed in the so-called city officer relative proposed amendments and contracts. Because of my Indigenous Day and celebration of First Amendment to contract again First Amendment.
Come on, Mr. Herman, you're getting off topic.
Second Amendment to contract the general manager. Now, as I prepare to control the controller, the city attorney rookie there, and any necessary technical adjustments, I advise the city attorney to shut the fuck up after this physical impact statement that I make, that we, the people of the First Amendment and the Second Amendment on item 35, one, C for cunt, D for dick.
Mr. Herman, I don't see how you're actually addressing.
Mr. Herman, if you're not, let's move on to his general public comment. He's not addressing any of the items that are before us. Just give him his one minute. Go ahead, Mr. Herman.
What a crackpot Jewish psychiatrist you are. You, Dr. Hugo, borrow a shovel from the union goons at DWP to dig up Dr. Hugo's grave. I'm Armando Herman, the critic, the gadfly, who should win a Grammy for my singing?
Mr. Herman, I don't see how this has anything to do with the subject matter jurisdiction of the city.
Cock. We have no sex in our marriage.
Mr. Herman, again, please talk about something with the subject matter jurisdiction of the city.
Flag and restrain myself for keeping wetbacks like Jose Weisar for participating while he retaliates against the American people.
You're done, Mr. Herman. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Antonia Ramirez, followed by Eric Previn and Mr. Walsh. Ms. Ramirez? I'm going to go ahead and remind you before you start is you filled out cards for items 34, 35, 36, and 37A. Go ahead and your general public comment.
Ma'am, I'll do public comments. Thank you.
You want to do general public comment?
Please, thank you very much.
You're not speaking on any of the cards?
No.
Okay, one minute on her general public comment. Thank you for letting me know. Go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a matter of principle. If your mother is a wetback and you were born in America, you are not, not an American citizen. You're a fucking undesirable, and thus you should be deported. All citizenships to those wetbacks who file fraudulent paperwork should be, the citizens should be revoked. Stop voter fraud. No wetbacks, no dreamers, and no gangbangers. Deport all wetbacks and gang-affiliated Latino chango políticos. Ice, 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 conduct your overdue massive raid on all L.A. and America. Deport these uncivilized, filthy, nasty savages, come caca undesirables. Let the riots begin. They are going to kill all the criminal wetbacks, gangbangers, and junkies and their families, and they will also go after the CIA, the FBI, and the NSA, and all the crooked políticos who have brought homelessness and poverty to America in L.A. That's Eric Garcetti, Mike Fuhrer, and all the other schmucks and shysters. And again, let, we want prop, we want safety, protection, health, and happiness riches. God bless.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. See you later. Thank you. The next speaker is Eric Previn, followed by Mr. Walsh. Mr. Previn, you filled out cards for 34, 35, 36, all of 36, and 37A, your general public comment.
You missed a few there, but thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself today. You know, whenever I see a fiscal status report, I get so excited because I know that it means the city is disclosing all their...
Mr. Previn, the FSR was public comment was handled with the committee. It's not subject to public comment today, and you didn't fill out a card on that.
That was in the Budget and Finance Committee that was tainted because there was a cluster of lien disenfranchisement and also closed sessions.
So, Madam President, Mr. Previn is refusing to get back on to the agenda.
Mr. Previn, you know the rules, sir.
I'm back on, I'm back on. Let's move forward.
We're just trying to get through our meeting. Just go ahead and finish your comments on the cards you filled out for.
Sure, sure. We have the liens, which I was just speaking about. We're confirming about $27,000 worth of liens, which is what I said last time, 26, I was a little wrong, but it was more, so you got even more money. And yesterday or the other day, you have agreed to reconsider, rescind the rule to stick all the liens up in that weird meeting, I think, or at least temporarily. Now, item 34, you've got Buscaino taking, stepping into the, to bat for the public here. What he's done is he quickly acquired a piece of property for $200,000, and now he's selling it for $450,000 to a charming developer right next door. Now, the only question that we have on that is, excuse me, where, how does that work? When you sell something from a CRLA group? It's just, it's just a little fishy, and to be plunked onto this, by the way, I just want to give one acknowledgement, and I think it's appropriate, to one of the longest and deeply movingest presentations we've ever heard from Mr. O'Farrell. That was, that was a deeply moving and long one. Now, the FSR not being on the docket is fine with me, I'm going to get back to the ones that are, which is certainly the CD13, rather, the track map over on Mitchell Trainer, that is Silver Lake. Track maps, as you know, sir, are the ones where at the very end of a project, we just want to make the final adjustments so that Mr. O'Farrell can be sure that the individuals know to whom to give a campaign contribution. And we're increasing the match, if you guys all agree, in the middle of November to six to one, but what we're also doing is, we're going to get Bonin and Coetz to jointly link and quash the threshold completely, turn it into a stipend. But with that, I want to get back to the item on the agenda that I was just about to talk about, which was 35. Now, here you have ITA, once again, increasing their software help, and it's Ted Ross and Rushmore Cervantes who are connecting this one with Mr. Llewellyn and CAO for approval. And what they're doing is they're taking a three or a $4 million job, turning it into a $7 million job. Now, of course, the question is, how would we, why would we do that? And I've asked them to provide the evidence that there was any kind of an RFP, because these are companies called Senrio, Soft HQ, and Satwik Inc., and 3DI, obviously, all reputable operators in the city for a long time, but the question is, what are they doing? What's the scope of work?
Thank you, Mr. Previn. You've got your one minute of general public comment.
My one minute of general public, I just want to say one thing about the fiscal status report. These are, these are important documents, and we should be able to talk out loud about how we're taking a million dollars and... be plunked onto this, by the way, I just want to give one acknowledgement, and I think it's appropriate, to one of the longest and deeply movingest presentations we've ever heard for Mr. O'Farrell. That was, that was a deeply moving and long one. Now, the FSR not being on the jacket is fine with me, I'm going to get back to the ones that are, which is certainly the CD-13, rather, the track map over on Mitchell Trainer, that is Silver Lake. Track maps, as you know, sir, are the ones where at the very end of a project, we just want to make the final adjustments so that Mr. O'Farrell can be sure that the individuals know to whom to give a campaign contribution. And we're increasing the match, if you guys all agree, in the middle of November to six to one, but what we're also doing is, we're going to get Bonin and Corretts to jointly link and quash the threshold completely, turn it into a stipend. But with that, I want to get back to the item on the agenda that I was just about to talk about, which was 35. Now, here you have ITA, once again, increasing their software help, and it's Ted Ross and Rushmore Cervantes who are connecting this one with Mr. Llewellyn and CAO for approval. And what they're doing is they're taking a three or a $4 million job, turning it into a $7 million job. Now, of course, the question is, how would we, why would we do that? And I've asked them to provide the evidence that there was any kind of an RFP, because these are companies called Senrio, Soft HQ, and Satwik Inc., and 3DI, obviously, all reputable operators in the city for a long time, but the question is, what are they doing? What's the scope of work?
Thank you, Mr. Previn. You've got your one minute of general public comment.
My one minute of general public, I just want to say one thing about the fiscal status report. These are, these are important documents, and we should be able to talk out loud about how we're taking a million dollars and, for trees, and putting 120,000 of it into Weezer's office upgrade, and reducing all the tree money down to 25 grand. And there's also important language about the untrue, getting to the truing up, the LAPD comments about overtime. These are all things that the public does want to talk about, too. To wedge them in on item 32 in an area where we can't hit them is really improper, and to do it up in a budget finance meeting where there's all these weird, can't talk on that, go over there for this, is very, very diabolical. So that's why we're asking to change it. Now, regarding those campaign finance points I made before, let's stipulate that it's important to have debates, and that's why we're having one in Studio City tonight, Friday, November 2nd, between 5:30 and 9:00 PM, and you're welcome, Mr. Faubel. All the council members are welcome, though we have a lot of attendance, so everybody gets the same amount of time. That's not something you're familiar with. Mr. O'Farrell likes a 90-minute run into his 15-minute wrap.
Thank you, Mr. Previn, for the invitation. Next speaker is Mr. Walsh, followed by Craig. Is there somebody here by the name of Craig? No Craig? How about Ryan? Anyone with a name? Ryan? Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Walsh, I'm going to remind you, sir, it's nice to see you back. Items 34, 35, 36, and 37A, and your general public comment.
John Walsh, logging at HollywoodHighlands.org. 34, take a look at just a tiny piece of land. They're selling for $450,000. How much did the city pay for it? Number 35, this is a community investment, $7 million, revised total of $7 million, an extra $3 million. It's very, very expensive. I'd like to go now to general public comment.
Your general public comment, sir. One minute.
The mayor is running for president. After that, he's running for Jesus Christ, but he's going to run for president. And as we know, he is falling apart, and no one gives a damn about the mayor, and I'm telling you right now that we want the mayor to step aside, and Weezer is running his wife and his girlfriend, his two girlfriends, for his seat. In other words, he's going to run so many people that he can't lose, and whoever he wins, he's going to give them a job.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. Moving on to our next speaker, Patricia McAllister, are you still here?
Yes.
Is there a Rita Cox? Rita Cox, are you here? No one by that name. Frederick Silic? Frederick, are you here? No? Okay. Ms. McAllister, go ahead and speak on items 34 and 35, and your general public comment.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Number 34 is about selling that property for $450,000, and then you're putting half of that money that you're going to get from that in District 10. Joe Buscano, his district, and then the other half, you said, you're going to put it in a general fund. We need more accountability of where this money is going. Once you give it to Buscano, what is he going to do with it? And then what are you going to do with it in the public fund, the general fund? I see money taken out of the general fund all the time. We don't know where it's going. I don't like all these funds being created every year. I think we should put that money in affordable housing. Any property that you sell should go into building affordable housing. It shouldn't be going to anybody else. We need to get these Democrats out of office. I don't know what you all doing. You're not following any kind of accounting procedures. I don't know what you're doing with this money. If you sell property, that money should go in affordable housing. We've got millions of people laying on the street. And when I, don't forget to vote Tuesday. I'm going to, anybody Republican, I'm voting for them. Now, number 35, I'm really against this. You've got four companies here who got a million dollars for one year to hire programmers. I'm a programmer. I have a degree in computer science. I don't know what you need four companies for. If each company gave, has, has two programmers, what are you doing with all that? You don't, that's not a million dollars a year. I'm a programmer. You can get a programmer for 70, 70 or 80 thousand dollars a year. You don't need all this. Now you want to give them another million for one more year. We want accountability. I want to see the books. I'm a citizen, a taxpayer, and I'm going to get those books. I want to see the accounting books. This don't make, and you moving money really fast since the Republicans are in office. I know why, because you know President Trump, they're going to come down on your rehands after this election. Give me my public comment, please.
Reverend, one minute.
This is about the election. Oprah Winfrey is a disgrace to the black community. Oprah said she supports African-American Democrat Stacey Abrams to be the governor of the state of Georgia, even though Abrams supports open borders. She supports these 10,000 illegal aliens about to break into the US. Oprah said that Stacey Abrams will serve the underserved. Oprah had a show in Chicago for 30 years, and she never helped the underserved African-Americans in Chicago. Now she's living in Los Angeles, the Los Angeles area. There are 20,000 African-American homeless women and children on Skid Row, and Oprah hasn't been down there one time. Oprah is clearly a traitor to the African-American community, and she is not to be trusted. To the African-Americans in Georgia, please do not vote for Stacey Abrams for the governor of Georgia. Please vote for Brian Kemp. He will work to get these illegal aliens out of the United States. President Trump announced yesterday, if they throw any rocks, a rock is considered a rifle, and we're going to blow them out of here.
Next speaker is Yvonne Michelle Autry, are you here? Before we, before Ms. Autry, hold on for just a second, let me take a quick vote. Members, go ahead and vote on items 34 through 37. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Autry, go ahead.
And Madam President, there is a request to send item 35 forthwith.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. Ms. Autry, you have your one minute of general public comment.
I'm sorry.
Your one minute of general public comment.
What about the other items?
You only filled out a card for general public comment. That's why you took the vote already.
No, I didn't. I requested other items as well.
That's not what we have you for. You have your one minute. Go ahead.
No, I requested other items. See, this is what the complaint is. I requested other items, and Ed Wesson had curtailed.
Ma'am, I'm, that is not what appears on the record.
Well, then, it didn't, it wasn't registered because I requested item number one, I requested 34, 35.
What items did you want to speak on?
I would like to speak on all of the items that are open.
Okay, we just voted on them, but go ahead. Next time, I really need you to fill out the cards correctly.
I have filled it out, and I'm tired of either it's not being registered or someone is deleting my request.
Go ahead.
I have done this previously, and I don't need you, Sedile, to gesture. I don't need you to do that.
Ms. Autry, you're not going back and forth with a member. You're going to, go ahead and speak. I'm going to give you your three minutes. Go ahead and speak on the items and your general public comment.
Complaint, and turn on my microphone. First of all, you're provoking people to civil, I don't need you to do this, Sedile, on the record. You're being rude, and you're being incredibly impertinent.
Ms. Autry, your time is running out. You need to speak on the items.
Tell me what to speak on, because this is a part of my comment. As a, as a complaint against this city, it's against you and also against Ed Wesson. We have a right to freely express ourselves. You're undermining our freedom of speech. We have a right to address our elected officials. You're provoking people to civil.
So, Ms. Autry, you wanted to speak on items, you've been given some time, and now you're not speaking on them.
You're wasting my time.
So we could go straight to your general comment. Otherwise, please speak on the items you signed up for.
Relative to the item regarding the police, relative to the item regarding your budgeting, your money should not be reinvested, as this sister stated, in programs or at any type of judicial ordinances that will limit our freedom of speech. I'm standing in opposition to the position that was taken by Ed Wesson. We have a right to express ourselves. Zuma Dog went to court, he won a right so that we.
Okay, again, Madam President, the speaker is not on any of the agenda items.
Pertinent, this is on.
It's perfectly fine comments for general public comment.
Ms. Autry, go ahead and just take up your one minute of general public comment. You're not sticking to any of the items. You have one minute left. Go ahead.
This is pertinent, relative to the budget, relative to the police. I'm speaking also against the drones. I'm against any proliferation of the drones because you're going to arm them, and you're going to continue to exterminate those that you consider a problem, advocates and also activists, especially that are advocating on behalf of the homeless. Your money should be given more to black people and African-American people. You're giving all of your money to the immigrants who are paid to break down and to make homeless black women and other people of color. The majority of the homeless people are black people. The maintenance men, the majority of those working, in working entry-level positions in Los Angeles are Mexican and Hispanic. Okay, I'm, I'm African-American, born in Los Angeles. I have seen Hispanic people, they can't even speak Spanish, working at the 99 cent store. I speak read and write, Spanish, French, German, and Italian. There's something very wrong with that picture, and don't you raise your fucking hands, Sedile, okay? Right, don't you raise your hand.
Ms. Autry, you're done. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Ms. Autry, your time is up. Concludes our general public comment speakers. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Madam President, for the record, the ordinances for item one and item 34 will be held over to November 13th for a second reading.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. Thank you very much. What's next?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements, Mr. Coquelin?
Madam President, I just wanted to ensure that the FSR item number 32 had been sent forthwith.
It has.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements, Ms. Rodriguez?
I'd invite everybody to join us at our second annual Dia de los Muertos celebration at Pacoima City Hall on Van Nuys Boulevard. It is tomorrow, beginning at noon till nine in the evening. We have Selena Mos, we've got a number of bands, Folklorico, and invite everyone to join us at Pacoima City Hall, as well as on Sunday, where we will commence with a procession from, to the event, and will be beginning again at noon and going till about 6 o'clock in the evening.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Sedile, do you have an announcement?
Yes, in the same spirit, we have a, one of several Dia de los Muertos, but this is really special tonight at the Hoover Triangle down on 24th and Hoover. It's a collaboration between CD-1 and CD-8. We've closed off the entire area. We don't believe in borders, and so, no, I'm just kidding. We do believe in borders, but in this instance, we are, have closing off the streets so that we can have a collaboration with CD-1 and CD-8, and everybody's welcome to come. We're going to have a great time from 6 to 10 or 12. Couple bands, Louis, Louis Beltran Cruise. It's going to be a great, great evening, everybody come, and it's going to be a very scary evening.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. Blumenfield?
We've got a great celebration happening at Canoga Park, pretty much all day on Sunday, Main Street, Sherman Way. We're going to have music and art and culture and all sorts of vendors. It'll be, it'll be wonderful. All are welcome.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wu, do you have a Dia de los Muertos celebration? No? Okay. Just checking. Anyone else? You already had yours, Mr. O'Farrell. And Mr. Curran Price already has hit. Okay, great. Just making sure we're going around our city, celebrating our dead. Can we please rise for adjourning motions, members of the public? Any adjourning motions to my right? Mr. Coquelin?
Thank you very much. Madam President, members, it's with sadness that I announced the passing of Anita Hirsch, who was known to many of us, incredible leader in Studio City and activist in the Democratic Party, friend to many of us here. If you didn't know Anita Hirsch, you should have. She was a remarkable woman who leaves an incredible legacy. She passed away on Saturday evening at the age of 82. Throughout her life, Anita worked tirelessly to improve the lives of others, especially in underserved and immigrant communities here in Los Angeles, in Israel, in the Jewish diaspora, in many parts of the world. Her parents, Natalie and David Friedman, were Russian refugees who escaped the Bolshevik Revolution and settled in Los Angeles in the 1930s. Anita grew up in this great city, attending Fairfax High, and after school she, after high school, she became a fashion designer, and in 1961 married the great Stanley Hirsch, who was also a friend to many here. A great Los Angeles businessman, Democratic Party leader, and the publisher of the Jewish Journal of Greater Los Angeles. Together, they owned the Cooper Building in the Garment District, and when Stanley passed away in 2003, Anita continued his long legacy of leadership and activism. In the 1970s, Anita advocated for persecuted Jews from the Soviet Union by bringing diplomatic attention to their plight and helping imprisoned Jews immigrate to Israel. She led the establishment of five nursery schools for underserved families in Tel Aviv for Jewish, Christian, and Arab children. She also founded the Hirsch Family Early Childhood Center in Yafa to promote coexistence between Israeli Jews and Arabs. Anita and Stanley were longtime, very important supporters of Jewish family service. Together, they built the Hirsch Family Kosher Kitchen that still provides food for hundreds of thousands of elderly and needy Angelinos of all religions, and most recently, Anita supported the construction of the Gunther Hirsch Family Center, a flagship location for JFS's social services on Fairfax Boulevard. She was a tremendous contributor to animal welfare issues as well, and she was a longtime supporter of Chimp Haven, a rescue facility for retired lab chimps in Louisiana. And in Studio City, she leaves an incredible legacy as well, both, as just a few examples, she developed the Hirsch Family Native Habitat Walk along the LA River, on the LA River Greenway Trail, and she was essential to many improvements for the Oakwood School, including the construction of the pedestrian bridge to keep children safe as they were crossing from one part of the school over Magnolia to the other. She had a passion for advocacy and, and protection of others. Her steadfast support for morally significant social causes was a source of inspiration for me and, and many of us, I'm sure. She's survived by her four children, Steve, Adam, Liz, and Jennifer, and her five grandchildren, Talia, Noah, Aaron, Eden, and Kobe. Services were held this week at Mount Sinai Memorial Park, and the family requests that in lieu of flowers, donations can be made in Anita's honor to Jewish family service of Los Angeles. May she rest in peace. Her legacy will remain long after all of us are gone, and I'd ask that we adjourn this meeting in her honor.
Thank you, Mr. Coquelin. I had no idea she had passed. If I can please be added to the adjourning motion? I knew them, I met both Stanley and Anita in the 1990s on the campaign trail, and they would open their home for a number of fundraisers, but more importantly, to nonprofit organizations. They raised a lot of money for really good causes. I will always remember that home on Laurel Canyon. And Steve is a good friend of mine, one of their children, who raises significant amount of money for human trafficking victims, as well as their daughter Liz, who raises a lot of money for good causes, particularly women's issues. So they raise an amazing, amazing children, so my condolences to their family, and if I can please be added to that adjourning motion.
Thank you, of course.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr.?
May I add on to this and just say a couple of words? I mean, you've said it all. You know, I've had the pleasure of knowing, or knew Anita for 20-plus years. She was one of the people who encouraged me to run for office when I was thinking about it. I got to know her when I worked for Congressman Berman. One of the great things about her, though, for all of us who knew her, she would not hesitate to speak her mind. She didn't suffer fools easily, and she, you know, I just loved to get her take on things because she would be so direct and clear about how she feels about a particular thing, and I have many memories of going up to her house, we would have lunch and talk about politics, and she was an amazing person. May she rest in peace.
Mr. Blumenfield? Mr. Coquelin, did you want to add anything else?
That Mr. Corretts would want to be added.
Mr. Corretts would like to be added, as well as Mr. Sedile on this adjourning motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other, any other adjourning motions? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Have a great weekend.